I don't mean to interrupt you. I mean, usually by about 6:59 it's dead quiet, but if you wish to continue the socialization, go right ahead and be fine with us. Great to have so many people here tonight. Thank you for joining us. We'll start out, as we always do, with our Pledge of Allegiance. We have a number of scouts. Hey, would you scouts, come on up here, would you? Line up up here if you would. You are here. Who's your spokesman? Somebody's the next political leader here in Westfield. Who's the spokesman? Raise your hand. Either that or I appoint one. Right here. Why are you here tonight?
We are here to...
To learn about city council meeting. This is part of your citizenship? Great. Would you please lead us in the process? When you are ready, gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Wow. Thank you very much. That was the loudest Pledge of Allegiance I've heard here in many, many years. Thank you all very much. All right. You can go back and watch the rest of the show. You'll stay the whole time? Yeah, great. Thank you. And before we open the meeting, Pastor Steve Pettigo with Eagle Creek Evangelical Friends Church is here to offer a word, if you would.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather here today, we acknowledge your presence and we thank you for your faithfulness through the years. I ask for your hand of blessing on the leaders here today. Guide them in their decisions, Lord God. Give them the wisdom that they need to move forward according to your will. And so we commit this time into your hands. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. President Ake, at your meeting, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to take this moment, this is the first meeting of the new year, and I hope it's a good one for all of us. The city has done quite well in the past year. I was looking at all our accomplishments over the last four years, and it's been a pretty exciting time with a lot of accomplishments, and we look forward to continuing that on into the new year. So, welcome. We wish you good health and prosperity as we move into... Will the clerk please call the presence, note the presence of a quorum?
Present.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
All right, thank you. And since it's the start of a new year, we have the opportunity to hold an election for the 2019 council president. At this time, I would entertain nominations.
I'd like to nominate Dr. Mark Keen for president of the council.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. So I have a motion by Steve Hoover to nominate Dr. Keen. I have a second by Chuck Lehman. Is there a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
All right. Since the nominations are closed, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of electing Mark Keen as our president for 2019, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? Hearing none, it is my pleasure to welcome our new president, Dr. Mark Keen. And sir, it is your meeting. Want to rotate seats?
I guess maybe we should. Thank you all for placing some confidence in me. I hope I make you proud. So, it's not on the agenda, but one of the items I need to take care of is to appoint a vice president to act in my absence. And since it is not my intention to file nor run for reelection, I will be a one-term president. Historically, this has been a two... The person has served for two years, so I think it's important that I appoint someone who has the ability to provide continuity going forward. So I would like to ask Jim Ake if he would serve as a council vice president for 2019.
Thank you, and I accept with honor. It's been a pleasure to serve as your past president, and I welcome the opportunity to serve and stand by you as vice president, Dr. Keen.
Thank you very much.
If I could ask a question, as a matter of preference, is it Dr. President or President?
You know, when I got my doctorate and I was in the Army, I was Lieutenant Colonel Doctor whatever. So, my parents named me Mark, but probably Dr. Keen would probably be the simplest one.
Very good, thank you.
Next item of business is to appoint our APC representatives for 2019. We have two representatives that we can appoint. I would take nominations for those positions.
Mr. President, I'll nominate Mr. Horkay and Mr. Hoover. They've done a good job, and I think that they can continue.
Do I have a second for that motion? I'll second it, if I can. Any other nominations? Before voting, I'd like to ask if Steve and Bob are willing to serve in that position for another year.
I am absolutely willing to serve again. I enjoy doing planning work and being part of our advisory planning commission. Happy to do it for another year.
Likewise. Happy to do it another year.
Okay, with that, then I would call for a voice vote. All in favor of Steve Hoover and Robert Horkay being our representatives to APC, please signify by saying yes.
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 Any opposition, say no. Congratulations, you get a lot of additional work for a very little remuneration. It's great to have people willing to do that. Appointment of BZA representative, my understanding is Ken Kingshill is our representative and would be wanting to serve again, so do I have a nomination to put Ken on the BZA again?
So moved.
Joe Edwards moves, is there a second?
Second.
I'll take Steve Hoover as a second on that. Any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of Ken Kingshill being our BZA representative for 2019, please signify by saying yes.
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 I do not believe there are any changes to the agenda, so we'll move right into approval of the minutes from the December 20th, 2018 meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Joe Edwards moves, and Ms. Swegerick seconds. Any discussion about the minutes, or any notations that need be made? Hearing none, all in favor by voice vote, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposition? Passes. Claims, you have to have the docket, the docket's before you. Need a motion to approve claims?
So moved.
Move by Jim Ake, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Robert Horkay. Any questions, clarifications needed? Not by voice vote, all in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
And the opposition, claims are approved. Moving into the special recognition section, the miscellaneous business, we have two special presentations. The first one, Westfield Welcome Update by Angie Smitherman. Angie, you're up.
Hello, President Dr. Keen and the rest of the council. My name's Angie Smitherman. I'm the Westfield Welcome, Welcome Westfield Department. Sorry, let me get this slideshow up. My team is not here tonight as they are out getting certified in event management, but our extended family is here, as you can see, in the bright orange and Colts Training Camp t-shirts. So they're here so we can brag on them. So, Westfield Welcome, to no credit of my own, started around 2014, 2015 by a former employee. And I believe at the time, her idea was to build on community engagement within the entire city. So she wanted to highlight and create relationships with our businesses, our community, and organizations that are here in Westfield. From there, when activities started to build out at Grand Park, it started to shift out there to offer hospitality to all of our guests who were coming into Grand Park. In 2018, Mayor Cook assigned me with a new challenge, one of many, many new challenges. And he said, "I want the Disney experience in Westfield." And so that has become our big goal for this year, is to create the Disney experience in Westfield while staying on task with our own mission as well. So our team has been working really hard on hospitality and tourism. Kristen Sparks, the Director of Guest Services, and I took eight-hour course on Disney experience. And Walt Disney's vision for great guest experience included the four keys, so safety, courtesy, show, and efficiency. And I believe that Westfield works very hard on those four things as well. So all we can do is improve and make those things better. And we'll focus mostly, and my department will focus, on the courtesy part of it, to make everyone feel welcome while they're here. So with that, we will take our vision and our mission with the city and Disney experience, and we're going to partner up with Hamilton County Tourism. They've been a great partner of ours. We have Sandy Allen, Sarah Billman, and Karen Radcliffe here representing them. And they're going to work with me to go throughout the entire city and train on hospitality for everyone who is interested. And so I appreciate them for that. They also offer super service training, and we're going to ask that that is the first thing you do before we train you. And there's the website right there. Once you've completed that super service training, you will get a certificate, and you also get a pin. They're going to trust all the people in this room tonight, and they brought pins with them, so if you could raise your hands, let them know who you are. They're being shy, sorry. They have pins up there, so if you want to do the super service training, they will hand you a pin tonight, and you can take it home. So we have created the Westfield Welcome Ambassador Program. We started with Colts Camp last year, and we had five training sessions for all of the volunteers who were going to come out to camp. And we tried to use that as a training tool on how we can roll this out moving forward. And so me and Sandy Allen will work on that, and there are two email addresses up there if you want to reach out to us. It includes every single person in this city, so if your business, your organization, your family, it doesn't matter, we are offering to set up training programs to talk to you about everything we've worked on, to make sure that this entire city is smiling, offering a handshake, and we're just welcoming everyone who's here and everyone who lives here. So our new resident program is another part of this new hospitality initiative that we're working on. Mayor Cook is offering to meet every single new resident, starting in 2019. I know, it's going to be tough. And poor Kristen has to suffer, because that phone number is hers. So, you're going to have to call Kristen to set up a meeting, and I have a feeling she's going to group about 50 at a time, because I've heard that we are getting a lot of new residents this year. So, as you can see in the picture, he's going to hand off a little gift, and he's going to talk to you about anything that you would like to talk about. If you know some people who are moving into the city, feel free to reach out, email us, call Kristen, let us know. We have a packet that they've worked really hard on. You can see the table of contents. We've tried to include every single thing that we think a new resident would want or need to know, or would be interested in when they come here. If you want that information, just email us and let us know. If there's anything you feel like we're missing, let us know, we'll add it in. Community engagement, without that, the few things I just mentioned would not work. So the best way we can get out and reach out to you, other than hospitality training, is to have our community events. We have 16 events in 2019, and two of them are new, and it's in partnership with William Knox's team at Grand Park. We're going to have the Grand Summer Kickoff, that will support the Westfield Education Foundation. Then we have the Grand Fall Festival, which will support Westfield Youth Assistance Foundation. So those are two new fun events that we can't wait to kick off. Volunteers, we have so many in the room, and I know that a lot of you up there have volunteered as well. We had 522 total for this year, 261 of them from Colts Training Camp. And so we really appreciate it. And that was with our Westfield Welcome Volunteers, our Westfield Police Department, Citizens Academy, our city employees, city council, and family members. So we truly appreciate everybody getting involved. And if all of the volunteers would just stand up and say hi, no? We appreciate everyone in the room who has volunteered. We also have one thing for all of you sitting up here. I can't promise to roll out the Disney experience without the biggest piece of the Disney experience, so some volunteers have some Mickey Mouse ears for you to take home. Feel free to put them on, we may or may not take a picture, I don't know.
You're welcome.
All right. You're welcome. Love it. Where's Vicki? Vicki better be getting pictures of this. This is great.
Where's the president at? You're good, Paul.
So over the last month, I've been going around the city, talking to people who have always put a lot of work into the community. And it's not everyone, it's just a small portion of everyone who does a lot of work. And we've really appreciated everything that they do, and I just absolutely love my job. I just recently read a book that said there are two kinds of people in the world. One of those who see work as a punishment, and the other who see work as a blessing. And I am truly the latter, because of everyone in this room and how close everyone is. So I've taken some pictures, and I want to show you a short video. Chris said, since we have this new system in here, we won't have audio, so I apologize that you won't have any sound, but I think you'll enjoy the pictures, and I'm sure you will know a lot of the faces. If I can get it to come up. How do you expand it? Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Let me just say, Angie, thank you so much, and all of you volunteers. Let me tell you what an important part of our city this organization is. You know, we have, of course, the Grand Park, and we're going to have the Grand Junction, and none of those things, be it the trail system or whatever we do, none of those things mean anything if we don't have a heart and soul behind it. And these people are presenting the city of Westfield in an unbelievable way. I mean, I would guess, I have nothing to prove this, that Westfield probably has more visitors per capita than any Indiana city, if not in America, because, you know, we're not very big. And what I hear over and over again, of course, is how does a little tiny city put on something like the Colts Camp? Well, 261 volunteers helped put on the Colts Camp. And the Colts will now tell you their success is completely, of this year, is completely based on the welcome they receive here in Westfield. Now Angie, you messed up the last game. So we have something to build on. But thank you all so much, because we recognize that these things we have here are absolutely of no value without the face behind it to put all the welcome, and that's why so many people return year after year now to Westfield. So thank you all so very, very much.
Okay, our other special presentation, I think Mike, is Mike Seagrave's going to make this presentation? Andy, are you making it? I'm not sure who you are. Okay.
I'll come forward, please. This is a little more somber note. I'm honored to have so many men and women. I don't see colors, I don't recognize that color uniform, John. Huh? John, as you know, it's been many years here, and I was taking a promotion with the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office, and we're very proud of you, John. You know, we had a tragedy back in January 11th, 1969, where we lost an officer in the service of the Westfield Police Department. He was responding to a call, I think, on the west side of what was our little town at that time, and was shot in the line of duty. We pray that that never, ever happens again in the city of Westfield, with a great sorrow that seems to be happening almost weekly across America. What these men and women go through for us every day, that we really tend to take for granted, especially here in Westfield, because these guys are out controlling our trails, unlocking cars, doing a lot of community service work, visiting our schools, dozens and dozens of visits to our schools every month now. We don't see that kind of activity in Westfield, Indiana. But it did happen, and it could happen again. And what these ladies and gentlemen go through every day, we so very, very much take for granted, and we are so fortunate to have you all in our service. We want to honor the one we lost, David Brown. We've done that in several ways. We have a street named after David Brown, it's called 169 Street, on Indian Street class. If you look as you're going over that street on US 31 northbound, there is a sign. I don't think him not likes it, but it's there, and it will remain there, Mr. Seagrave. Honoring David Brown, and I know, I don't know, five or six years ago, we actually took a trip up to Jipden, and presented a wreath to his grave, and I think we're going to do that again in the next meeting. We'll never want to forget this gentleman, because he represents so much of what all of you do. So if he would, we have a proclamation. Like to present, if I may? Yes, Mike. You're the one that thinks I'm alive, this time. Whereas Deputy Marshal David K. Brown of Westfield will be honored on this date of January for giving his life in the line of duty 50 years ago in three days. Am I right? He sacrificed his life protecting our community, responding to a serious suspicious legal call behind what was in the Westfield High School. Is that right? And the result laying down his life. He's greatly missed by his family, his friends, and today his community that didn't even know him, but will never forget him. And therefore, I, J. Andrew Cook, Mayor of the City of Westfield, have hereby recognized Deputy Marshal David K. Brown for his heroism and sacrifice, and have set therefore my hand and cause that fix this seating for the city of Westfield, Indiana, on this 14th day of January 2019. I hope, thank you for undertaking.
We have our ordinance 18-26, the city of Westfield to vacate public ways. Jeremy?
Thanks for the opportunity to present tonight. For the record, I'm Jeremy Lawler with the Public Works Department. Before you tonight is ordinance 18-26, which was first introduced and had its public hearing in June 11th of 18. It is coming back tonight for adoption consideration. It is the vacation of, and drainage easement, as well as some existing public right-of-way at Nancy Court. And this, what you see here is, let me figure out how to use this, is Grassy Branch Road. So you know, they have a redevelopment shopping center here, Planet Fitness and others are going into this Westfield Lighting Building. We would be vacating this right-of-way and this drainage easement to accommodate the redevelopment of that corner into what will be that future shopping center. So Nancy Court would then become this new street. In order for them to be able to redevelop and redo their plat, we need to vacate the right-of-way so that they can effectively give it back and build the appropriate drainage pond here. This was, again, introduced back in June. Was not necessary to have approval until the development gotten a little further along. We are at the point now where they're looking to sell that and develop that outlot, so they need their secondary plat in order to do so. Originally, there was another parcel as a part of this ordinance. It has been removed and will come forward later. It was in a different location, located at 31 and 32. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Jeremy? Looking for a motion on ordinance 18-26.
So moved.
Jim Ake moves. Joe Edwards makes a second to approve ordinance 18-26. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll. Yes.
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 Yes. Next item is ordinance 18-49. Kevin, I believe, you're up on that one?
Thank you, members of council. Good evening. For the record, Kevin Todd, Economic and Community Development Department. Item before you this evening was introduced since your October 2019. Item before you this evening was introduced at your October two thousand and eighteen meeting as a new single-family residential PUD called Bordeaux Walk. The property is approximately thirty-nine acres in size and is located at one six seven zero seven Ditch Road. Since the introduction, approximately six acres were added to the southern portion of the property. This allowed for relocation of the detention pond to shift to the south and also added units to the proposal, increasing the maximum number of units from seventy-two to eighty-four, as shown on the concept plan on the screen. This item does come before you with a unanimous favorable recommendation from the Advisory Plan Commission and is eligible for adoption consideration this evening. The petitioner is present this evening but does not plan to make a presentation. So with that, I'm available for any questions that you have of staff and the petitioner is also available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, first, let's see if there's a motion to approve ordinance eighteen dash forty-nine.
Move to approve ordinance eighteen forty-nine, Bordeaux Walk.
Bob Horkey is.
U.D. District.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Steve Hoover. All right, discussion, any questions of Kevin, the developer, or questions in general for staff?
I have one question. On the north side of the project where it's going to be abutting One Hundred and Sixty-Ninth and then the city property, I had requested a buffer and I see that that has not been added. Am I correct?
The real estate which is adjacent, that's owned by the city, the plantings would occur on the south perimeter of the city's property. We were instructed by Public Works and to follow their direction regarding the vacation of the right-of-way and the construction of the trail on that particular property. There is planting, there are planting requirements in the rear yard of those lots that would abut the city, but because it's an institutional use to the north, the ordinance would specify that when the city develops that real estate, it would, the buffer would occur on that side of the trail.
Other questions?
I would just comment that part of the reason that the additional acreage was added was at the request of the resident primarily that lives there at the bottom left. They own that land behind them and it was their request that some of that be included in this development. And so there was an agreement reached by the developer and the petitioner and the neighbors to sell a portion of their property.
Thank you. Any other comments? Quickly, call the roll.
Yes.
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 Okay, last item under old business, ordinance eighteen dash fifty-three. Dane?
Evening, members of the council. The record, Dane Crabtree with the Economic and Community Development Department. Then before you, the proposed amendment to the one hundred and eighty-first street planned unit development, specifically parcel A, which is located at the southeast corner of One Hundred and Eighty-First Street and Sun Park Drive. As you may recall from its December tenth introduction, the proposed amendment would permit outdoor event stage on the property. Since the introduction, language has been added to the ordinance stating that the stage may only be permitted if ancillary to a brewery production and tasting room or a sit-down restaurant. This item received its public hearing at the December seventeenth Plan Commission meeting, where it also received a unanimous favorable recommendation. This item is available for adoption consideration this evening. John Knight from Grand Junction Brewing is present this evening if there are questions of council and I'm available if there are questions of staff. Thank you.
Do we have a motion on ordinance eighteen dash fifty-three?
So moved.
Motion by Jamaica, second by Stan Dispoljerek. Any questions of staff or petitioner? Other, and other comments? No questions, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, moving into new business, ordinance nineteen dash oh-one, Lindley Run Annexation. This is an introduction, but it does require a public hearing. So Pam?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Pam Howard with the Economic and Community Development Department. Before you this evening, I have a one hundred percent voluntary annexation of approximately one hundred and eight acres, generally located at the southeast corner of One Ninety-Sixth Street and Grassy Branch Road. The majority of this area will be part of the Lindley Run development. This is eligible for public hearing tonight and will be up for your adoption in February. The petitioner is here, they do not plan to present, but are available for questions, as am I, if you have any questions of the department. Thank you.
Okay, this does require, this introduction does require a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing if anyone has comments on this voluntary annexation. Hearing is open at seven thirty-five. Any comments on this? Clock moved quickly and I will close the public hearing at seven thirty-six. With that, we will move this on then to the APC and we'll have it back before us in February. Next item?
Mr. President, just clarification, this is annexation, so it'll just come back to you. Yeah, it doesn't go to the Plan Commission. Yep.
Okay, next item of new business, Pam again, ordinance nineteen dash oh-two.
Yes, thank you again. For you this evening, I have a proposed new PUD ordinance to be known as Lancaster to accommodate single-family attached and detached development. This one hundred and forty-five acre site is located on the north side of One Hundred and Eighty-Sixth Street, west of Spring Mill Road. It is currently zoned the AG SF one district and the Spring Mill Trails PUD district. The proposed ordinance permits a maximum of five hundred and ninety dwelling units with a mix of detached residences, duplex dwellings, and townhomes. The proposed ordinance specifies architectural, landscaping, and open space standards, as well as incorporates a concept plan and character exhibits to guide the development of the real estate. The petitioner's representatives are here to present and both they and I will be available for questions afterwards. Thank you.
That's gonna, that's gonna open up our presentation slides here, but good evening, Dr. Keen, members of the Plan, the City Council. Good evening and for the record, my name is John Dobishewitz, I'm a land use professional with the law firm in Nelson and Frankenberger. We represent the petitioner, Platinum Properties Management Company. Present tonight is Paul Rio, an owner of Platinum Properties, Jim Schinner, an attorney with our office, and other members of our development team. Platinum has over thirty years of development experience in Westfield with neighborhoods including Countryside, Maple Knoll, and most recently Osborne Trails and Northwind, which are under development today. The matter before you this evening is the introduction of the Lancaster Planned Unit Development District, which is a rezone request to permit the development of a mixed-use residential neighborhood. The real estate is outlined here in yellow on the aerial map on display. The site is generally located north of and adjacent to One Hundred and Eighty-Sixth Street, west of Casey Road, south of One Hundred and Ninety-Third Street, and east of and adjacent to Spring Mill Road. Members of the council to your left and audience on this, on display here, One Hundred and Ninety-Third Street is further removed from our site, located here, Six Points Road tees in there. Casey Road tees into One Hundred and Ninety-Third Street here and One Hundred and Eighty-Sixth Street is along our south perimeter. Spring Mill Road across and to the west and Grand Park adjacent to and immediately to the east of this site. The real estate is comprised of two deeded parcels and has approximately one hundred and forty-five acres in area. This is an excerpt of your zoning map that illustrates the property outlined in yellow. Approximately forty-five acres of the real estate along One Hundred and Eighty-Sixth Street is zoned AG SF one and approximately one hundred acres of the site today. The cross-tache area, which is contained within the yellow outline, a hundred acres again, is part of the Spring Mill Trails PUD, which is the surrounding zoning to the north and the west. The Grand Park zoning is immediately across the street and to the south, the Garden Market District identified PUD zoning is where the Sundown Gardens exist today. This is an excerpt of the city of Westfield comprehensive plan map. As you can see, the site, the site and the surrounding areas are designated new suburban on Westfield's comprehensive plan, where the proposed type and style of development that's subject of this evening's petition is under the terms of the Lancaster PUD, which is anticipated under the new suburban designation in the comprehensive plan. As proposed, Lancaster will incorporate a mix of residential housing types with two districts identified here as Area A and Area B as part of the plan. The exhibit on display identifies these two areas, the area in blue is the, is Area A and the area in yellow is Area B. Approximately one hundred and ninety single-family detached homes are anticipated within Area A, as shown here. And Area B will include approximately three hundred attached for-sale townhomes and duplex dwellings, with a maximum of one hundred duplexes and two hundred townhomes within that particular area. This is a concept plan exhibit that's now on display, which identifies the Lancaster proposal. The proposed townhomes are located in an area to the south and east, highlighted in yellow. That area here, it's not readily visible very well, but this is the area where the townhomes would exist, generally south and east along One Hundred and Eighty-Sixth Street. The townhomes will provide a residential use transition adjacent to ground along Spring Mill, which we believe may be more likely to develop commercially in the future as it's across the street from Sundown Gardens and Grand Park. The duplex dwellings are located further west along One Hundred and Eighty-Sixth Street in the area shown in blue. Single-family detached dwellings occupy the area north of the duplexes and townhomes and are shaded in green. Access to the neighborhood will be from primary entrances along Spring Mill Road and One Hundred and Eighty-Sixth Street with a secondary stub street connection to the west. Lancaster will also provide for over twenty percent open space, including both passive and active amenities, which will be centrally located within the neighborhood, as shown on the concept plan. So you can see here, there's a primary entrance along Spring Mill Road that runs through the site. The amenities are centrally located here. This area along our western perimeter is Little Eagle Creek. The outlined area in red is an extension of Little Eagle Creek Trail. We've been asked and provided a connection to the Little Eagle Creek Trail that would come through this piece of real estate, surround our amenity facility, and then take folks over here to Spring Mill Road. There is an existing entrance into Grand Park that's located right here and that would afford a direct connection through, from Grand Park over to that trail network that the city's extending as development occurs in the area of the Little Eagle Creek Trail. In addition to the trail network shown here, there's a connection into the site. This exhibit are various photographs taken, as well as illustrations from the PUD ordinance that give you character examples of the types of products that will be available within the development. As noted, there are multiple residential product types that will be provided in Lancaster and they offer a diverse mix of for-sale housing options. Everything within the development is for sale, there's no proposed multifamily for rent development. These options include townhomes, duplexes, detached homes, which will serve all residential segments of the market, from first-time buyers to empty nesters. All homes will have architectural standards above and beyond those required under the current UDO, which are included within the text of the PUD. The single-family homes within Area A will be a mix of ranches and two-story homes and it's anticipated that their sale price will begin in the low three hundreds. The parrot villas or duplexes are anticipated to sell in the lower two hundreds. And the individual for-sale townhomes are expected to average in the high one hundreds, high one hundred thousands. The next exhibit here is of the proposed amenities. Lancaster, again, will provide over twenty percent open space, including a large landscape buffer area detailed in the PUD ordinance. Both passive and active amenities are shown here. As indicated in the PUD, the central amenity area that I described earlier will include a large picnic shelter, a community swimming pool and clubhouse, a large, and a large playground, as well as the covered walkway pergola facilities that you see illustrated here. These amenities will also be connected via that trail extension that I spoke about a minute ago. It's important to note that these community amenities will be open into the entire neighborhood and maintained by an HOA. Additionally, it's been brought to our attention and we've provided in our ordinance facilities that would accommodate amenities for that segment of Spring Mill Trails, which is north of One Hundred and Eighty-Sixth Street. So those future subdivisions that would be located in District One as part of the Spring Mill Trails PUD, which are all north of One Hundred and Eighty-Sixth Street, would be served by this amenity facility, including the recently submitted Emery Trace subdivision, which is north and west of our proposed development. In conclusion, Lancaster responds to the call for greater diversity of housing products within individual neighborhoods by providing an expanded range of for-sale housing options lacking in this area of the community today. The terms of Lancaster PUD will also be provided, a clear picture for amenities which will be constructed to serve real estate and the surrounding area. Later this month, on January twenty-third, we'll have an official neighborhood meeting. All the council members are welcome to attend that meeting as they have in the past. And then that would be in advance of a February fourth Plan Commission public hearing. And then after the fourth, we'll take the comments that we've received to date, including those from the public and Plan Commission, and go back and review our proposal and make necessary adjustments before we would return back to the Plan Commission, seeking its recommendation back to the City Council. So it's anticipated that we may be back in front of the council sometime in the month of March for your further consideration on this matter after it goes through the Plan Commission review process. Platinum, Platinum, excuse me. Platinum's looking forward to the opportunity to respond to the requests made by the council to see mixed-use residential neighborhoods in Westfield which provide a broader spectrum of homeownership options. We'd like to thank you for your time this evening. We'd be glad to receive comments tonight. I know we've already received some comments from some council members in advance of moving on to the Plan Commission. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from councilors? Sidney?
I have some. As you know, we have a current situation with the amenities for the R two district in this that I know staff's working diligently to try and handle. I see some of the same problems potentially occurring with this, one, two. And I know that you're trying to solve that problem with this, but I feel that some of it is undersized for the amount of units you're gonna be talking here. And also, the future problems that we see with separating these out, this being now Lancaster PUD and Spring Mill Trails not being a part of that, but yet still reverting to some of the language and some of the things involved in that. So it's, it's the same thing that we're facing with the other proposal that's in the process right now. I also have concerns about some of the PUD language and exhibits and architecture. I'll have those after the APC hearing.
Okay, thank you. And with regard to the Spring Mill Trails, we're working, staff brought that to our attention. We're working closely with them on the way the ordinance language is incorporated so that we make sure that it's clear that when someone approaches staff on a piece of ground that's part of Spring Mill Trails, north of One Hundred and Eighty-Sixth Street, that they can be provided quick and accessible information on how that folds into this amenity facility. So from, from logistically how it works, we'll make sure that we dot all the i's and cross the t's on that with staff so that they know that it fits together and ticks and ties together moving forward. But we'd look forward to your comments, Ms. Dispoljerek, on the amenities that are provided, as well as the standards that you would want to see further action taken on.
Other questions, comments at this time?
What are the amenities, John?
At a minimum, in that central amenity facility that's located here, at a minimum, there would be a clubhouse, there would be a pool, there would be a playground, there would be a basketball court, and also a shaded pavilion. There's photographs that are indicated there. If the council, Platinum Properties has built and been involved in several other subdivisions within Westfield and around central Indiana. We took these photos actually from Maple Knoll. So if you drive in the main entrance on Spring Mill into Maple Knoll, and I think the road curves around and to the north generally, and you visit that facility, that pool house in that amenity facility serves approximately seven hundred residents or single-family homes within Maple Knoll. So that gives you an idea from a scope and a scale of the intended amenities to serve this area, which would be several fewer. I don't know the exact number, but fewer than those number that's served in Maple Knoll today, to kind of give you an idea. We wanted to make sure that this was sized appropriately to serve this number of residents. And Platinum has had a good experience in Maple Knoll and received positive feedback from the residents there on the level of amenities that are provided. That's not to say that we're not receptive to additional discussion about what That's not to say that we're not receptive to additional discussion about what can be done. We had talked about perhaps a playground or another structure near the intersection of our trail system and, and the trail along Little Eagle Creek, which we're taking into consideration. So those might be an opportu, there might be an opportunity there to fold in more active amenities.
Anything else?
Can I have one more? Sorry. I just want to bring it up earlier rather than later, so you could have time to work on the language. I'm really concerned with rentals and, and a company coming in and wanting to do a major rental project with these single-family indoor attached products, given its location in Grand Park. And like we've done with Lindley, I'd like to see some kind of provision where that is restricted to a minimal amount based on hardship.
We are considering that, and the reason we haven't presented it this evening is it's because it's not part of the ordinance. We would make it at the time of the Plan Commission and include it in a set of private restrictions or commitments, if you will, that we submit for consideration at that time, but it, it, it's definitely something that's being reviewed.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. John, on what, tell me about the open space. Did you say twenty?
It's a, a minimum of twenty percent.
In area A, on that northwest corner?
Yes, sir.
You're showing a pond, right? That little northwest area?
There's the-
If I blow this up, I lose my-
Yeah, there's the, there's the pond that's proposed at that location. Everything generally north and west of the pond is, is floodplain. We can produce horizontal, if you will, improvements there, but not vertical, so we've extended the trail from one end of the development to the other that would connect with future development on either side. That is the space, though, that we had done some consideration of providing some additional, like playground, picnic shelter, that type of facility that can be constructed within the flood zone, or if we can find a pocket that's outside.
That's where I was getting at, thanks. Will those trails, will they be surface?
Asphalt.
Sorry.
I think there's six or eight.
On grade, is it, is it too low, or are you gonna have to build that up, or will those trails-
No, it, it would all be at grade, and we'd provide a crossing. There's a, there's a parcel that was filed with the Plan Commission. It's called Emery Trace. It's immediately north and east. If you look over here on the exhibit, that, that real estate abuts us right here, and we're working through the logistics behind providing a connection from that area to, onto this trail, working with whatever the restrictions that are placed on us for the flood zone. It wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be a bridge, it would be a at-grade crossing, and we're working through those issues to see if we can provide a connection there.
Yeah, great, great place for public open space, back there, residential open space. Thanks.
Any others?
As, as I noted when we talked earlier, I, I do have concerns with the number of garage doors that we'll be facing our right-ofways, particularly on one hundred and eighty-sixth Street, and particularly with the townhomes. Just, it's, it's pretty much all garage door. I just have concerns with that. I'd like to see something better.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, John.
Thank you.
Next, we have artist nineteen dash oh-three. Kevin, I believe you're back up.
Members of the council, good evening again. For the record, Kevin Todd, Economic and Community Development Department. The item before you this evening is a proposed amendment to the Junction Plan Unit Development, which is located at the northeast corner of US thirty-one and State Road thirty-two. This PUD amendment would allow the hospital to have an accessory heliport, as well as established design standards specific to that use. The applicant met with the Grand Junction Task Group in December and has received a letter of their support, which will also be shared with the Advisory Plan Commission at their next meeting. This item is scheduled to receive a public hearing at the January twenty-second Advisory Plan Commission meeting, which is next Tuesday, and at staff's request, the applicant has expanded the area for which notice was to be served due to the unique nature of this petition and the potential impact on nearby airspace. The petitioner is represented this evening by Scott Tripp with Riverview Hospital, Nathan Winslow, civil engineer with American Structure Point, and Rex Alexander, a heliport design consultant from Five Alpha LLC. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Alexander for his presentation. Following his remarks, I'm available for any comments or questions that you have of staff. Thanks.
Yeah. Yeah, and petitioner does have hard copies of the presentation. We can pass out if you're interested in those this evening as well. It's the same that what you'll see on the screen. Go ahead, thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your opportunity to speak to you this evening. It's greatly appreciated. My name, as he said, was Rex Alexander. I work in the aviation industry and have been for about thirty-five years. Just a little bit about myself. Did twenty years in EMS, was, worked with Lifeline Helicopter for ten of those years here in Indianapolis. Also worked in Fort Wayne with Lutheran Air, another EMS provider, but then was regional manager for the Central United States for a company called Omni Flight Helicopters. So have done EMS for quite a while in and out of many hospitals around the United States, specifically here in Indiana. Former board member and president of what was referred to as the National EMS Pilots Association. Was president for two years of that and is still emeritus status. Also a board member and president of the Indiana Association of Air Medical Services, so I got the opportunity to help write EMS standards for the state for helicopter operations. If you're not familiar with it, NFPA, that's National Fire Protection Association, NFPA fourteen writes fire code for heliports and just about everything else under the sun. I have served on the committee for that since two thousand and six and write code for the United States Fire Code. I work with the FAA consistently on their design guide. They have a guide that is considered the standard in the United States for heliport design. It's AC, as AC stands for Advisory Circular, one five zero five three nine zero dash two C. It's been around since nineteen fifty-nine and has had several revisions as technology has improved. I've designed the heliport risk and liability assessment tool that we put out for heliports around the United States and also other countries. Author of the National EMS Pilots Association Hospital Heliport Safety Program, currently co-chair of the US Helicopter Safety Team Infrastructure Group, which dictates and works with the FAA on infrastructure safety around the United States, and instructor for the Transportation Safety Institute in Oklahoma City for heliport evaluation training program. So I am here to help give you an understanding of what helicopter air EMS looks like specifically from the area of the landing area, what we refer to as the heliport. So at the end of the day, or at the end of this session, I'm hoping to give you the information that you have to make a good decision and feel comfortable about that decision, be able to recommend that. So when we look at the interested parties, when it comes to heliports in the United States, there are several, and this, and depending on what state you're in, there are some differences. Federal Aviation Administration is one. They write the guidelines for the advisory circular, which dictate what the heliport is supposed to be designed to. The National Fire Protection Association, which writes fire code, gives the fire marshal guidance on what he then needs to interpret for fire code. With that, then there's the International Building Code and the International Fire Code. These three, the NFPA, IBC, and IFC, all point to each other and reference each other. So National Fire Protection Association four eighteen heliport standards really is the big dog in the pond when it comes to what the standards are. They then refer to the FAA, so it gets a little confusing on the, on the front end. The OSHA has a little bit to say about it, but more from a performance standpoint when you look at staff working on site. The State Department of Transportation has their guidelines. Now, I work very closely with the Indiana Department of Transportation's Air Nautics Division. We have filed our paperwork with them through their channels and also for the Federal Aviation Administration for this heliport, and so far, everybody's been very happy with that information. The DOT in the state of Indiana gives permits to heliports. Now, in the state of Indiana, a private facility, which is what this is, would need a permit. However, there is a caveat in the regulations in the state of Indiana that specifically stipulate that if you have less than one operation every seven days, basically one a week, that you do not have to meet that standard and no, and do not need a permit in the state of Indiana if you're a hospital or a fire institution. If you're a private citizen, you still have to get the permit. And then local municipality and fire marshal, basically it depends on what code the local municipality has adopted. So if the municipality here in Westfield has adopted NFPA fourteen International Fire Code or International Building Code, those codes then become requirements. Now, as far as the terminology you're gonna hear me throw around, to give you an idea of what that is, there are three pieces of airspace at the actual landing site. You'll hear it referred to as a heliport or a helostop. Now, when you look at the federal regulations, they actually stipulate primary surface is made up of three pieces. The TLOF, which is referred to as the touchdown liftoff area, that's the actual concrete that the aircraft comes and lands on and takes off from. That's what the pilot lands on. Now, there's two additional areas outside of that. One's called the FATO, or the final approach and takeoff area. This is to provide the pilot with maneuverable space so that he has plenty of room to maneuver without worrying about hitting anything. Outside of that, there's an additional buffer, a safety area. This is primarily put in by the FAA, so if there was an emergency that the pilot had to deal with, he had that additional space to deal with that situation. Now, the dimensions for the airspace that we're putting on, on site are based on the aircraft that's going to operate at this site, i.e. the largest aircraft. So in looking at the region, we looked at all the different aircraft in this region that could possibly come into this site. The largest one in this area is going to be Fort Wayne's Parkview Helicopter, which is a Dolphin. And we increased it slightly and said, well, what's the aircraft of potential, say, twenty years from now? So we looked at that and we used the Augusta Westland one thirty-nine, which is the larger aircraft that's out there. It's mainly on the east coast, west coast, but was working in EMS. The TLOF, which is the inside, is one times the rotor diameter of the design helicopter. The FATO's one point five, the overall length, and then the safety area is one-third, but not less than ten feet. So when we boil all that down and look at what we're going to put in, this is what it looks like on the property at Westfield Hospital. So we have a forty-six foot by forty-six foot TLOF for touchdown liftoff, that's where they're gonna land, and we have the eighty-three by eighty-three FATO and a hundred and thirteen by a hundred and thirteen safety area. So the overall footprint of this on-the-ground area is a hundred and thirteen by a hundred and thirteen, and we've already matched this up with all the utilities. Everything fits really, really nicely. Now, orientation is preferred to the approach/departure paths. That's the other piece to this puzzle. So while we have a nice footprint on the ground, that's only a two-dimensional footprint. What we have to do is then put in airspace in a three-dimensional site to allow safe approach/departure paths. So the FAA's guidance on this is we have a standard and an alternate. Now, we said earlier that this is a private facility. It won't be public, so not anyone can come in here and land, and it'll also be referred to as what we call PPR, or prior permission required. If you're flying around, you look down, say, oh, there's a heliport I want to land, you can't do that because this is a prior permission required private facility, and the state and federal recognizes that. Only those individuals, the hospital identifies and has a signed agreement with, are allowed to land at this facility. So that takes a lot of those issues out. The airspace that attaches to that two-dimensional touchdown liftoff area, FATO and safety area, is what you see in front of you. It's a ramp into the sky. Now, the green area is the surface that the FAA is going to look out for obstruction evaluation. That surface is an eight to one, meaning for every eight feet you go out, you come up one foot, and that goes out to four thousand feet. It starts the width of that FATO and then expands all the way out to that four thousand foot mark to five hundred feet. So when the FAA comes in and does their airspace determination, what they're making sure is there's nothing that's going to penetrate that floor. The two to one that you see on the left, we're going to use the one on the right, the alternate. We have a penalty where we actually expand the eight to one, but we then don't have to use the two to one. It lives, gives private facilities, specifically hospitals, a little bit more allowance for the surrounding area, especially in urban environments. So when the FAA comes in, they'll evaluate this facility on the one on the right, the alternate, and those areas that you see over here are basically also the eight to one. Now, keep in mind, when a helicopter pilot flies this approach, he's not gonna be flying that eight to one. That's the surface, that's the area that we want to make sure is safe and does not have any obstructions. That's in reference to, in degrees, seven point one two five degrees. When we look at the approach that your average EMS pilot's gonna do coming into this, it's probably gonna be more around the fifteen-degree mark. So what I did here is, this orange line down on the bottom actually is the eight to one out to five hundred feet above the FATO. This would be where the pilot would be on a fifteen-degree approach. He'd be a thousand feet versus five hundred feet, and then shoot the approach to the pad. So that aircraft's gonna be higher than what the eight to one would be. Now, we take all that, put it together, and overlay it on the Westfield master plan, and this is what it looks like at a high altitude. These extend out four thousand feet from center in both directions. They expand to five hundred feet wide. We get down a little closer, you can see what this looks like in close proximity to the downtown area. Now, those little white lines, those are hash marks for distance, which then relates to vertical. So each one represents eighty feet, which then gives me a ten-foot vertical. Oops, did I go the wrong way? There we go. So this is the close-up of the area. What we did was take all these different locations into consideration based on what is currently on the books as maximum height, to make sure that whatever we put in will not influence, negatively influence, anyone that wants to build on any of those locations. I keep going backwards. There we go. So when we looked at the distances, right about here at G, we looked at eighty feet plus a ten-foot drop in ground level, gave us the ability to build to the maximum height for this area as prescribed in the master plan, which was ninety feet, worst-case scenario. That was the one area that we were most worried about, right in this area right here. So with this oriented in this direction, we do meet that standard that was set forth in the master plan. As you go out, we continually go up, so as we go out farther, becomes less and less of a potential issue. Looking off to the northwest, we didn't see any choke points in there at any point. That was all clear based on, again, the information provided for the master plan as far as the maximum height of any buildings that were going to be constructed in these areas. This is built in a computer-assisted design and then implemented, so in a three-D world, this is the eight to one here with the extensions, and these buildings were all built en masse to the maximum height. What we were looking for was any type of penetration of the building to that eight to one. We didn't get any. This is a pretty good view of what the pilot would see looking down towards the hospital on his approach, coming in that direction. Now, hopefully this will work on your computer. This is an animation of what that would look like to the pilot. So I set this for the pilot coming in at eight hundred feet above ground level, and once he comes in, he intercepts the approach and shoots the approach in. Again, no, no- Again, no penetrations of any of the buildings on the eight-to-one. And a nice, clean, clear approach/departure path in from that direction. This is looking back up towards the direction to the southeast. Or the southeast, you can see where it goes over the top of the... We scaled this at nine stories. And I think we worst-case that at ninety feet for fifteen foot per story, which is what the hospital used. Also, in keeping with what the master plan showed, there were two large tower structures for the future to be integrated into the overpass. We masked those out to the height that was stipulated and adjusted this approach/departure path to the north so that there was no interference with those being constructed at any time in the future. This is what the pilot would see coming in, shooting an approach to the southeast. Again, this is, again, done in a computer-assisted drawing with Google Earth as a background. So this is what the pilot would be seeing as he's shooting his approach to the pad along the approach/departure path to the southeast. And that's a shot of looking back up at the other direction. Now, one of the things I wanted to make sure that you understood, that was the actual structure of the heliport and then also the airspace that attaches to it to safely fly in and out of that location. The one caveat we look at is what we identify as obstructions and lighting those obstructions. So the hospital will have red lights on top of it because that represents obstruction to the aircraft. Now, there is a guide in the Federal Aviation Administration's and recommendations... Oops, let me go back one. Come on, there we go. So there's two specific references we use. There's one, which is the heliport design guide that I spoke of. Then there's another one is Advisory Circular Obstruction Marking Light, which tells us how to do it. The AC tells us when we have to do it. The other one tells us how to do it. And in the AC, it actually shows us where we have to pay attention to, where these obstructions then need to be lit or marked. And what you'll see here is this being the FATO or the Final Approach and Takeoff Area. Underneath the approach, anything that's underneath that out to about eight hundred feet, and then it's got another approach angle out of there. So we look at this and identify those locations that would need red obstruction lights. The good thing is, is we can actually mask those so that people on the ground can't see them, so only the pilot can see them. So they're not a clutter to the environment or the community. So you've got heliport one-on-one in a very short period of time. A lot of technical stuff. I hope I gave it to you in a understandable information, but if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those at this time.
Any questions from council?
I have a couple. Just a note, that was the longest introduction for the smallest footprint we've ever had. Were you involved, Mr. Alexander, in the IU pad down the road?
No, I was not involved in the IU pad.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Since most of the area where the takeoff and landings are occurring are in redevelopment areas, are in vacant areas right now, are there any guidelines that the FAA or you all have for what kind of structures may be preferred in those areas? Or, in other words, I guess I would hate to put in a dense apartment complexes right in that area in case there is an air emergency of some sort and we're auto-rotating and doing whatever. So I don't know if there are any guidelines. You understand what I'm worried about. We have a fairly clear area right now. I don't wanna... I prefer that we consider things that are compatible with the air use so that there is an emergency, that we're not risking a lot of problems.
No, no. For the current timeframe, what is being, has been identified and would be used right now on campus, the guidelines set forth by the Federal Aviation Administration is, comes out of what's referred to as the Aeronautical Information Manual, or you'll hear it referred by pilots, is the AIM, A.I.M. In there, in Chapter Ten, there's helicopter operations for seen operations. That's the guidelines that are being used currently since it's not a permanent heliport. The guidelines that we're using for the heliport are, again, coming out of the Advisory Circular. And one of the things we look at in either case is the approach in and out. What we try to do is keep it over, limit the time that the aircraft is over congested ground space as much as we can. So when we try to align those approach/departure paths, we try to align them to that, but we also try to make sure we align them to environmental conditions. One of the things we have to worry about is where the wind is coming from in any given day. Here in the state of Indiana, in this location, the winds are primarily based on NOAA history out of the west-northwest about seventy percent of the time. Now, I will give you one additional point, that that approach/departure surface and approach/departure path, as the FAA sees it, is only a recommendation. If the pilot shows up and he sees that he cannot do an approach because of environmental conditions, he then can elect to go to an alternate location or adjust his approach accordingly to make sure that he is doing it in the safest possible manner. The approach/departure path that we recommended to the FAA, they then come in and actually look at, they're also looking at what you said, is making sure that it is over the least amount of population as possible. We try to put it over highways as much as we can. We try to put it over interstates and commercial, things like that, to the extent possible. Does that answer your question? Thank you.
You might note what the anticipated number of flights are per month, per year, versus what, I mean, you had said that shouldn't be, to use that one guideline, it had to be less than one a week. But the anticipation, I think, is maybe important, too.
No, no, I understand. Scott, what we say that was the numbers?
Yeah, so I can give you, in Noblesville, we have less than one a month. So it's not very often, but when we have a... It is needed for a certain type of patient, and we wanna provide that service for them if they need it.
And I think you also stated that most of the flights would be outbound rather than incoming for transferring.
Rex could give you an idea, but the pilots don't take long. It's not where there's a lot of noise or... We don't get any complaints in Noblesville. I mean, they line up and they're on the ground pretty quick.
I just thought it was important to note that this is not a daily occurrence. This is maybe twelve times a year on the outside, so we're not gonna see a lot of helicopters coming in.
My goal is, my hope is, it's never used because you don't need it. But it's there if you do.
Any other questions?
There won't be a helicopter sitting there, like, stored there.
No, there's no intention whatsoever of actually having an aircraft based at that
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
We have one other item to deal with, and that is the consideration of the Westchester option. I'm sorry. Oh, land disposition, I'm sorry. Land disposition update. Paul is it?
Yes, I can give you an update on that. So in connection with the creation of the Westchester PUD, they filed commitments that were recorded on February the seventh. And under those commitments, it stated that the city and Washington Township, in their sole discretion, had the ability to, within twelve months, so expiring on February seventh of this year, to enter into an option agreement that would allow, if the city decides to go forward, to purchase the Woodwind Golf Course should the developer elect to discontinue operations of that. So the update and the request for this evening is to authorize the city to proceed to enter into an option agreement, which would secure your right in the future, not an obligation, but the right, should that golf course discontinue operations, that the city would have the opportunity to buy that property and operate it, either as a park or a golf course, or whatever the city felt was in the best interest of the city. So that's the issue tonight. Dr. Keane is to authorize the city to move forward to execute that option agreement.
Okay.
And this is actually, we actually skipped an item there, but since we've already started on this one, I would suggest we continue.
Let's finish the Westchester option first.
This is the consideration of the Westchester option, as shown on the agenda, our final item before guests.
So what we need is, let's first get a motion on the floor to enter into the option commitment with Westchester for the option on the golf course. So is there a motion to enter into that commitment?
I would make that motion.
Motion by Steve Hoover, is there a second?
Sure, second.
Second by Robert Horkay. Okay, now discussion on the option.
Yes, I would, when the Westchester PUD was passed a little over a year ago, or about a year ago, one of the commitments from the developer, along with some others, was that the city or the township and/or the township would have the option to purchase the golf course, the land that the golf course sits on, at the time that, if the golf course in the future closed for any reason, ceased operations. As was noted, the city could choose to continue it as a golf course. That's highly unlikely, that some future council or administration would do that because, I mean, I think we've stated before, we have no interest in owning a golf course. The purpose of this was to, and this was something, this was commitments made to the council as well as to some of the landowners out there, neighbors of this development, is my understanding that they wanted the city to have this option to help protect that land from future development. This is simply exercising that to make, to give us that option sometime in the future. That could be five years, that could be fifty years. So this, there is no obligation on the part of the city and/or the township to purchase this land at that time, and that would only occur if the golf course ceased operation under its current management. I feel like this is a, I mean, I would take this option as a set price. I can decide some years or decades from now whether I wanna exercise that. I see no downside to doing this. It simply gives us and future councils an option in the future to exercise this at a known price. We can always say no.
Are there other comments?
Could anyone explain why we had a year on that commitment? I mean, why it was written in like that? Why it wouldn't have been in perpetuity or some other time that we had that option?
It was one year just to enter into the option agreement. The option itself goes on, as Mr. Hoover stated, forever, essentially. It was just one, you had one year to decide whether you even wanted to enter into the option agreement. So that's all we're taking action on, is to move forward, to sign this option agreement, preserve your right sometime in the future should they discontinue the operation to buy the property.
And it costs us nothing to do so.
Correct.
And we never actually are obligated to make a purchase.
Correct.
We want to at this point. I can say that safely. Okay, I just want that clarified.
Any other questions or comments?
Steve, I heard you say that we never wanted to own a golf course the night we passed this Westchester business. Now, we could. I'm not saying that we will, but we could.
We could, but I don't know, I mean, as of now, I don't think this council, this administration, has an interest in doing so. Fifty years from now, or twenty years from now, some future administration and council and city may choose to do that, and this would give us that option. Or you just acquire the land and there's no golf course. I mean, this doesn't tie us to anything. It simply gives us a right in the future to say yes or no, we want to buy this property or we don't. If we don't do this, we don't have that option. This was also, I believe, a commitment to some of the neighbors out there, as much as it was to us, that they wanted the city to have that option. And I don't want to... This was something that was included in the commitments as this development moved forward, and I believe it's important that we keep that in these commitments. I mean, we keep that as the option, as it was intended.
Would this force us to commit to doing things like this, whatever they might be, for future developments, for green space?
It doesn't commit us to anything.
I understand, but it'd be setting a pattern if we did.
I'd be, personally, I'd be happy to take that option on anything, as long as I can say no at the time, sometime down the road. I don't see how it, I mean, this is no obligation whatsoever. This just gives us an option sometime in the future to say yes or no.
Well, you can probably tell I'm not enthusiastic, but I'll probably vote for it.
I believe you did.
We're tying up a very nice piece of property at a known price with incremental increases that are all stipulated, with no obligation to buy or do anything whenever it's just a foot in the door. I don't see a reason not to do it. We don't, will either never have the opportunity, or if we would try to have that opportunity without having done this, we'd be in a negotiation that could cost more. I mean, none of us sitting up here today, but whoever it is that occupies these chairs in the future. So I think I'm more than happy to give our successors years into the future an opportunity that if it does, for some reason, come to pass, is a fairly priced opportunity for some really nice property.
Mr. President, breaking this down to a pretty elementary level, we're just getting, you know, we're talking about land, we're not talking about a golf course. If it can't be run privately, I'm really positive, we don't wanna try and run it. So we're looking at a very reduced value, like half what they paid for it. So it's a pretty good deal. While I don't have a couple million bucks laying around, I'd sure like to have the option to buy that at that price. So this obligates us in no way, but does protect us into the future, so it's kind of a no-brainer.
Other comments? Call roll.
I'll make a motion that we enter into this agreement.
We've got that.
You did that? You have the motion, sorry. Sorry.
We know your vote, though.
I know what I'm doing. I'm voting for it.
Yes.
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 Okay, and since I skipped over it, let's go back. Is there any update on land disposition?
I can give you a report from Brian Zager, my partner. So the city currently owns a home that's located at one-fourth three-eight East, one-hundred-and-fifty-first Street. And it was acquired... And it was acquired by the city to do some road improvements there to the west of the Target Store. And as a consequence, the city does own that property and is seeking to dispose of the property and went out, got a certified appraisers to appraise the property. However, the general market is not in line with what it's being appraised for. So what Brian has told me is the city will be proceeding now to retain a real estate broker and see if they can come up with a possible sale of that property. And he, when he said, when he returns, will be happy to answer any additional questions, but that's kind of the status. There were no qualified bids that came in based on the appraisal, so they would look towards a real estate broker to sell it.
So by statute, once we go out and do the appraisals and take bids for the appraisals and nothing comes in, then we are legally entitled to...
Well, I didn't seek what the market really will bear for it.
Right. And we still have the right to say no to those at this point in time if we don't like that, too?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay. Any questions?
No, I appreciate the update, Paul. Thank you.
Okay, now we're on to residents who wish to address the council on items not on the agenda, may do so at this time. Do we have any comment cards? Anyone interested in commenting? All right. City council comments. Do we have any comments from city council? APC?
I can give an update on the APC meeting, fairly brief, January seventh, one week ago. We had a public hearing on Monon Crossing PUD, which is out by, catty-cornered from McDonald's, thirty-two and Wheeler. We had a public hearing on Westgate. And we had a public, held a public hearing on Lindley Run, overall development plan and secondary plot. That was it.
Any other council comments? I just, I will just make one comment. We have no items for a city council meeting in two weeks. So we will not have a city council meeting. For those of you in the audience who this becomes one of your two highlight nights of the month, you will not have a second highlight this month to come to. So moving on. Mayor.
Yes, thank you very much. First, I'd like to thank Attorney Paul Reese for watching over us tonight. Mr. Zager is on a much-deserved vacation right now. We did get our final notice back from DLGF and our tax rate did not remain the same. It actually dropped. Not by much, but it dropped. And I can tell you this, I think it is lower than the cities to our south. See if you can figure that out. I want to give a special thank you to Tammy Havard. I don't think she's here this evening, but you council, I know, are aware of the constant annual long-term battle we have had with the Indiana Department of Revenue on correctly collecting our food and beverage tax. And now we've added another one to that, the alcohol and tobacco tax, we have found has not been properly given to us. Tammy and John have worked for several years. They believe, and they have told me, I think the Department of Revenue now has a system in place to do this correctly going forward. But in their last go-around, they found two-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand dollars in food and beverage tax that had gone to the wrong place. You know where that is? And twenty-three-thousand dollars worth of alcohol and tobacco taxes that likewise had gone to the wrong place. So that was quite a job to get all that worked out. I think, because I didn't hear any bad news, I think we got through the storm in very good shape. I was a little worried, I got to tell you. For those of you who may know Travis Stettnish, he is our snow guru. And Travis is having some health issues. And he was, much to his chagrin and mine, he was actually in Riverview Hospital. I did go over there Thursday, asked his wife to leave the room. I said, Travis, you're coming with me because I'm not going through a storm event on Saturday without you. The hospital would not allow him to do so, but he was dismissed on Friday. He was home on Saturday. He commanded it from his living room with his radio and his computer. And his crew did a wonderful job with all that. So I'm... And we also, our prayers go out for Travis for his, for his health. And lastly, stay tuned on Thursday. It's our annual State of the City talk. And I will tell you, it'll, it's going to be a little bit different. It's not going to be your normal, long dissertation. Dr. Keen, I think you've given me that notion a few times. It's going to be a little different this year, so stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you. We, oh, we could point of adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. I assume everyone's in favor. So we're done.